Open comments?
This meeting is being recorded.
All right.
Do we have a like an agenda thing?
Yeah, oh, there's a bunch of them right here.
Oh.
Sorry. All right, then public comments closed, select board ports, Sue.
Oh, I know, first time. So I just read you discussed the speeding sign flashing the sign and the board came in today. All right. So I'm hoping that it will be fairly quick as long as that's actually the problem. But it's been gone over with the tech support people and, you know, so we're pretty sure. And you can actually see a burn mark on that top light board, so pretty confident.
So we're thinking maybe the next week or two?
Oh, I'm hoping within the next day or two.
But tomorrow would be awesome.
That would be good because the UPS guy brought it here. I'm like, you got anything for my house? Keep this right to my house. Good.
Helpful. Do we want to put it in the same place or do we want to put it in a new place? We could always just put it there.
Well, somebody had suggested it moving up more towards the Blanchard Road.
Yeah.
I think it might be helpful to slow traffic coming down the long hill.
I think. Yeah, because you do, you know, you're pretty fast coming into town there. And if it was just maybe, I don't know, before or after that turn?
I would say past Blanchard Road headed out of town, but obviously on the incoming.
Kind of like right around Hebron Heights-ish.
Yeah, like maybe down the hill a little bit from the driveway.
Yeah. From their driveway.
How easy is it going to be to move that thing around, I wonder?
Well, not very. I, Steve wasn't very happy with me once he had it up. And I asked him, please take it back down. And he was wondering, well, can't he just come fix it on the pole? And so, right now, it's actually mounted on my garage. But it would be so painful.
Right, right.
It's on a bracket, right? There's a bracket hanging.
There is, but.
So, yeah, yeah.
So we would just have to move that.
An electrical hook up or?
No, it's solar.
Well, I guess for the time being, we just park it back where it is.
Yeah.
Because it's better than nothing. But then look at the possibility of relocating it. It would be nice if it could be moved around town.
I think we could put it on some.
We can build something, yeah.
Yeah.
We actually need one of that sort of towns.
Well, and that was why I mentioned last time.
Well, now that the road is.
They do have a, we've talked before, the state has one, a portable one.
Yeah.
That you, I'm not sure how that work. Each town has a certain amount of time to use it.
So maybe we could borrow it.
To get that one, you know, if they wanted to have a portable one, you know, like this weekend probably would have been a good time for it.
That actually, the deadline is passed for that. You have to sign up because they have limited ones. And I believe it's a two-week limit that you get to borrow it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But it's an annual signup, so we're.
Yeah, I think so. So we might be able to get it for next year and if we pick our preferred dates.
If I had a chance.
Yeah.
Cool, let's do that.
So that was, that was my first one.
Do we want to see about making it portable, like for the now? Or do we want to just put it up where it's been and then figure it out later what to do?
I'd say just get the stuff up there for now.
Because we'd have to buy the equipment to make it portable, right? That would could take time.
Or make something, I mean, something like that wouldn't be, I wouldn't.
Should we look to see how easy it is to move up to by Hebron Heights?
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, could, could Steve put a new poster up tomorrow? Is that, is this in the game?
Tomorrow, I'm not sure what his plan is for tomorrow. Maybe, but maybe he needs.
If he can, let's put it up there. And if not, let's just get it up.
Okay.
So leave it up to Steve as to whether it's a four-hour job or a four-day job? I'm sure four days is stupid.
I would say that, I remember I put in that post and it had to go down like three feet. It was quite a job digging that out.
It's pretty heavy, so it would need.
Just a post, but probably get maybe. I noticed Adam's got his little excavator right over at Millie's.
Might be able to get him to go up and dig the hole and then he can put it up real quick. Yeah. Let's, let's see if somebody could get it up there. But most important thing is just that it's up.
Yeah, yeah. I, I went to take a look, but then it's been several weeks. So I had heard that the ladder was stolen off of the beach float.
You're out.
I'm out of the works.
That's a lot initially.
And I was to put back and it was chained.
Okay.
And.
Because I saw, I just signed things for nuts and bolts to for the.
Yeah, and so then we put it back and it's, apparently the dock itself is in pretty rough shape. So it's, it's hard to mount it properly.
I went out and looked for the dock in the water to look at it today because I wanted to see for myself. And where the ladder was mounted, it looks like it's been fixed several, several times. And so like where the plastic meets the bolts is all broken. So like they literally just pull right up out of it.
Right, right.
And then they have like some silicone stuff all trying to make it work, but it just.
It seems like a safety hazard there.
Well, yeah, and.
We're pulling with the dock. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's.
Was the dock vandalized recently? Did I hear that?
No, it's just old. It's old and the, I guess it's plastic and it's very brittle for being out in the sun and the weather. So then they chained the ladder so at least it didn't fall to the bottom of the lake. And then put it back a couple of times. And then, I don't know, we're assuming it's on the bottom of the lake. But the whole raft was gone and everything last night when I went by and I'm like. And then this morning it was by the beach and Sue Gluehr had pulled it from wherever she found it when she was out swimming.
Oh, my goodness.
Then out changed the tree.
It sounds like we need to budget for a new.
Yeah, so I'm gonna look at that in.
As long as nobody gets, gets hurt trying to get on the ladder and falls, right?
Right, because I mean, if you put any weight on it, if it's just falling off anyways and then you go get on it and it comes right up, then that's a whole other situation.
Maybe we have some contingency money for this year, depending on how much it is.
Yeah.
To replace the thing and if it's too much.
Yeah.
Put it in for next year, but.
Yeah, and there might be something in, I know there's like the beach signs, depending on how much things are.
If you get a price and see what it would cost, you get a whole new unit.
Right.
There should be something there that's usable.
It would be nice, we still have half the summer.
Right, right.
And my third last one was, thank you, Steve, for the moving the 35 mile an hour sign on North Guilford Road so that it's those people down coming into Monson.
Well, let me correct that. The sign has been moved.
But they're not.
There's no real change in.
I know, I know. I said that kind of facetious of it. But going out of town on North Guilford Road, I realized there's the 35 mile an hour sign. Where is it? Somewhere before the cemetery or just after the residential. But then it doesn't change to 45 after the houses. So I think people are, I don't know. I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but the rest of the road to 150 is 45, right?
Yeah, it should be at the 45 opposite to 35, so.
Correct.
Some of that section.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because otherwise, I don't know, that makes a big deal.
Maybe Steve could find a 45 mile an hour sign.
Maybe.
One step forward, two steps back.
Thank you, Sue, Sandra.
All right, I do have a bit of a list. Start with, I'm jumping the gun a little bit because this is sort of bicentennial, but it's also a base town. Town must have mass and contention of people on August 20th. Eight to as many as a dozen people, which is great. They're staying in Greenville. They wanted hotel rooms, which we don't have any of. They didn't like the idea of hostels. Said that that's what we had in town. They are spending money to get up here. And I'm thinking it would be nice if we had some sort of welcoming event or some event on Saturday, Friday night or Saturday. Town to town, that means us and them. And I just thought I'd throw that out and see what people thought and what we might be able to come up with.
When, when is this?
August 20th. They'll be arriving on the 19th.
On the 19th.
On the Friday. We'll be here mid to late afternoon on Friday, the 19th. And my initial thought was something on Friday night.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is great, except they're taking a bus here. They need transport back and forth. And Monson Art's van will be able to transport them. I worked that out with Shantel.
Oh, okay. I didn't know they had a van.
They stand.
Yep. But we would have to have probably Shantel or Jamie or somebody drive back and forth Friday and Saturday. So then I started thinking, do we go up there on Friday night? Do we do something on Saturday here?
Do you know where they're staying?
Yes. Moose Mountain Inn, I was gonna say, over Greenville Junction or beyond.
Moose Mountain Inn.
Yeah, do I have the name right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So if we're up for it, I'd be happy to look at some possibilities if ideas can be shared about what you all think might be a nice thing. I was thinking something low-key, you know, like cookout by the lake, but where, who, you know, when?
Anything we could have catered that would be.
Hostel. Maybe we could talk to Cassie because we might be able to do something. So should I look into this? It sounds like we're in favor of it.
It would be nice if we could do it in town here.
It would be, yes. All right, why don't I talk to Cassie?
So are you thinking for Friday night or Saturday?
Either.
Okay.
Well, your plans are Friday night.
Technically, yes, though that is my honeymoon weekend. I'm driving back up for Saturday's event.
You've got a lot of nerve.
I know, my husband's like, why do you make a lot of this for two years? And I'm like, I don't know about. It's their privacy, they only plan once every 200, so they win.
All right, you're off the hook there.
So Friday night, like Saturday morning, I would be up here.
Maybe shoot for Saturday and maybe.
We could do like.
We could do like a happy hour or something, something real small on Friday and then.
Or we could go up there is the other thing possibly. On Greenville and meet them on Friday. And I don't know, give it some thought, see, see what.
What time do things start on Saturday? 10, I had 10.
Oh, good grief, I don't even know what time the parade is.
Well, we got the parade, right?
Yeah.
The parade is, I think.
I want to say it's probably 10, yeah. And it's going to be a biggie.
It's going to be a big parade.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nobody traveling through Monson will be happy that day because they won't be traveling. Okay, so let me work on that and I'll, I'll communicate to you guys, I guess, what I'm coming up with and you can share.
Great.
So you had brought up ATV road use guidelines or something we ought to be attending to.
Yeah.
And that doesn't seem to be on our radar as yet, but it probably ought to be just so we're proactive.
Yeah, last year we, we talked about it and I just, we kind of left that we would investigate and we're hoping the state was going to come out with some, the legislature with some kind of guidelines or something. But I haven't heard anything. And I just didn't want to lose sight of that because, you know, it just seems to be, you know, we're going to get another request and I just feel like we should have some objective criteria, you know, with the requests.
Did you mention that some towns had this already committed to paper?
Someone said.
I thought I recalled that, but I really mixed it up.
No, was it Villanoket?
The DOT guys mentioned it.
Yes, that's right. And that would be something.
Yeah.
To look at and I didn't know if you had started doing that.
I hadn't.
I would like to. You are the chair of the policy committee.
There you go.
Really? A lot has happened since I missed a meeting.
If you miss a meeting, you just.
How, based on status quo, how has your experience been on Elliottsville Road?
It depends on the weekend. Light Worth weekend was hellish, if I can say that.
That's good.
Yeah.
Which I kind of got that done up in Sussex around town with all ATVs.
I didn't notice them so much as the fireworks and the dog was very concerned about fireworks.
There were, there was a lot of ATV traffic on Elliottsville Road on that weekend. Many people are going slow, but you know, there's that handful that's always ruins it for the others.
I didn't notice problems on North Guilford with speed. But that's well enough travel, it's more of a main road than Elliottsville is. Anyway, we shouldn't lose sight of that and Villanoket it was, I think.
I agree. Yeah, it was DOT mentioned Villanoket had something.
So we should be able to get a copy of what they have for Villanoket from now.
I'll cruise their website while we're talking.
Rick, how's your experience down in Little Mary?
Actually, I, the Little Mary, I've been, I'm not down there all the time now, but I think it's been pretty good. It's just mostly been the locals like they're supposed to be.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it, you know. Last year there was a group that went, they were headed, and they went past the sign down into Little Mary. It was just a one-time, you know, they probably lost, is what I'm thinking. Hasn't been that, I, I noticed in town here though, like you said, on the, I think it was the, it looked like there was a lot of coming off the Elliottsville Road when I was traveling through.
And I wonder on Elliottsville Road, I know there's campgrounds, people are going into Ottawa as well. And I wonder if that's just, there's just more stuff down there.
Yeah. True value, I'm sure they're, they're looking for a place to go riding.
Rich, do you have people out on Baker Street Road?
Just a couple of people that live there, yeah.
I haven't noticed someone.
Same person back and forth.
Yeah, yeah. Two for it. Fun is that. Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, is that a Sue or a Sandra?
I'll try to, I'll start kind of some research.
We can just get a copy of it. That'd be a great first step.
Yeah. I'll, I'll proceed then.
Okay. Excellent, I love this answer. Time capsule is still a question nobody seems to know much about.
Where did I just see something said it may or may not have been found?
I was told it has been found.
Really? By whom? Brian, I think he's got it saved out down here, but I don't think anybody's dug. And I think it's on the agenda next door tonight, but obviously I can't be two places at once, so.
Yeah, I, I thought that it, who told, I don't know. Like over there, like.
Yeah.
Everybody was pretty certain that we know where it is.
Why don't I check with Glenn and see if that's true, that we found it?
Maybe you're John Whitworth or, obviously not you. You would have been a guest if you weren't here.
All right, I just, I feel like it kind of fell through the cracks and I'm never going to find the silly thing if we don't make an effort here. All right, moving right along, cemetery maintenance is already on this agenda. The last thing, and I have run this by Elena already. We need to do some work to get some town committees fired up here. Mutification committee could really use a couple of more members. So I'm thinking we would be well-served to have some recruitment info. We absolutely need a committee.
Yeah.
To do stuff like organize softball games and take care of the stuff that's in the gym and, you know, be involved with kids' games and that sort of thing. As well as an events committee, which would, in my mind, be responsible for Snow World or for Summer Fest or whatever else we might have coming along town. So my thought was, and I ran this by Elena earlier, we put out a recruitment post. Anybody interested in doing this? See if there's steps forward. We already have some names of people who we've either identified who have said, sure, I'll help. So I think we could get groups together. We also need to do it to make it happen because we can't just let this be a hazard. Or else nothing will ever happen in town again. So Elena's okay with that. I can work with you if you like to draft, copy.
Yeah.
Whatever, and be helpful.
Is there like an application or anything that they have to fill out or just?
How'd I get on mutification? I saw something posted on the Facebook page, I think.
Raised your hand.
I raised my hand. I said, sure, I can help with that.
Yeah.
So.
Daniela just asked me, you know, Daniel just approached me.
Okay, all right.
It can't be anything that's more involved than signing up for select board. That's literally.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. If we, we post it places that people are already listening, like the WIS and the Beach Book, like even here in the office and even like if they come in to register their card, if there's a poster sitting there, they're standing, they're waiting for us. I mean, they're going to read whatever we have up there.
But people with kids ought to be interested in the rest.
Right, right.
Like likewise, the events committee. And I think if we have the right words, like advertising copy to suck people in.
Yeah, wasn't there a group that was interested in, that consisted of Jonathan Cohen and?
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't got a promotion. The person who was going to do it isn't the head field hockey coach at Boxer now.
No, that's right.
I mean, there are people who have said, so. If they don't step up, we'll.
I'm dead.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And that's all I will say for tonight because it's 6:30.
Cool, then I'll, I'll piggyback on that because for, for Saturday, one idea that I had was if we could set up a tent or a table or something and have a board where, are you, actually Elena, are you going to be around Saturday?
I can be.
It just would be a good kind of meet and greet.
Yeah.
I'll also be around and would be good to have like a board where we can share some of the, all the things that were on our priorities list and also some other things and have people weigh in on stuff that they think is, is.
Do the dot thing.
Yeah, the dot thing or the sticky note thing or whatever, just to get feedback. And then we'll loop them in on, oh, hey, you want a recruitment meeting?
Sign up sheet, we could have a quick draft maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. Beautification, beautification.
I've got the dots.
Got the dots, okay. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to take a look on that.
Okay.
And there, there are a couple of canopies at the Historical Society, I'm sure one could be set up out here.
Okay.
Perfect. I'm just going to be busy, I think, from 12 to 2, winning the perpetration.
No, I'm going to be running most, sorry. And that's here.
It's here, yeah, it is.
Yes. I'm not coming in last, yeah.
What time are all the things being set up?
Oh, stuff starts at seven o'clock in the morning, literally.
Are there flyers anywhere? Because you should have a staff and I didn't see any. And a couple people.
I will give you some tomorrow.
Okay.
There's some at General Store, there's some at Post Office, there's some at Robinson's.
Okay, well, maybe that's why not too many people have been asking.
I mean, you do have the poster.
Yes.
Villanoket and the flyers don't do anything more than.
Oh, oh, okay, because it was more of like a pamphlet.
Yeah, but it's the schedule and then on the back, the address is for anybody who doesn't know where stuff is, so it's nothing.
Well, anyway.
Okay, just. Just bug me.
All right, what else? On. Do you have an update from recycling?
I, I was just thinking that Marty's been forwarding emails from them. So apparently municipal review committee won the stocking horse. It had, it was tied up a little there in court. It was probably in the paper.
Yes, it was.
The judge kind of said, oh, gotta check on something. But it, it went through. So I think the last email, because they were just, MRC was going to talk with a couple of, of other operators, I believe, just to kind of see if they wanted to partner in this together or if MRC is going to just contract with operator. But it looks like at some point, hopefully in the next month or two or something, once they get everything up and running, we'll have our recycle.
I thought a fair amount of monetary investment was required to get things repaired and.
Yeah.
Get it shaped to do that. And where's that money coming from?
They, they were having an executive session meeting. I believe they're going to talk about that and I didn't go to that one. And so I'm not sure where that was.
I think the last municipal article said that they were seeking like minority investors. So maybe they were going to, what they were going to do is go back to people who had expressed interest before but didn't want to buy it entirely themselves and see how they would want to participate.
It would be great to have it up and running again, but the last thing I remember reading, we think that would happen anytime soon because of the.
I'm thinking like fall, but I, I don't know, we'll, we'll see. They, they send regular emails, it seems, out as they are making progress.
All right. Has anybody heard from DOT on the scope that they're?
I've been meaning to ask you about that.
Okay, I'll call up on that.
It was supposed to be here by now.
Yeah. I have some code questions, we'll wait on that. And Water Street update, we were gonna.
Yes, so there was a little snag with that. Apparently when the, the public hearing was held, so the, the public hearing was filed with the Registry of Deeds. And then after the public hearing, the owner of the property was supposed to have been served with the findings. And the findings should have been also filed with the Registry of Deeds and none of that was done. So we found that out at the last minute. We assumed that it was done because we knew that the other one had been recorded and stuff. So I reached out to Zach and that is a, a legal thing. So I did send the notice of findings to a process server in Massachusetts. That was a couple of weeks ago. Their policy is to make four attempts. And then if it can't be served, then they'll send us something notarized. So I did reach back out to him and he said that it appears that the property is vacant. But we've heard that before from people who have tried to bring things there. So I did ask him if he'd made the four attempts yet. And I asked Zach, what do we do in the event that it can't be served? And he said that we would need to just post it in, in the paper for three weeks and send it by regular mail to his last known address. So I'm waiting to hear back from the process server if they've made those four attempts or not. And I asked him also, please send me the notarized document saying that it can't be served if that's the case. So that's where that is. And I guess when, so did I say three weeks we had to run the, run it in the paper? Okay. And if he does get served, then he legally has 30 days. And Zach didn't feel like we needed to have another meeting just because, I said, this guy is not in the dark about it. I said, we've had multiple conversations. It's, it's not like he doesn't know and was just never notified. It just, the procedure wasn't followed. So we're just waiting on that and as soon as all those things run themselves out, Mike's ready to get going.
Do you want me, I can just back up about the MRC thing. I just found the last email, so I didn't want to misspeak on that. They said, MRC is proceeding with discussions and working with a number of private partners who potentially share ownership and operation of the facility. This reduces the need to ask members to help with financing to restart and reopen the facility. We've had very successful meetings with some who participated in the receiver sale and some who did not. Overall, were positive about proceedings and would implore the time when MRC is able to own and control the destiny of a hand in the facility. Their next regular board meeting is July 27th with a finance committee meeting at nine that day as well. So if, I'll look at my calendar if I can attend that. I will, I don't know if they do a Zoom on that, but.
Have we heard anything new from Premium Choice, some of the employees? I've seen the trucks around.
Yeah, he was around town working today and he says that he was going to be here pretty late today because there was. And then he said something to you about the store. What did he say about the store?
Oh, no, that's actually, that's actually.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
I don't know really anything about Premium Choice, where they're at with things, other than that they had called me a while back. I think before the last meeting and said they were ready to get going. I haven't heard anything else at all from them.
Okay, I'll check in on that.
And if we want to roll out Axiom, then.
Yeah, would you have a, you have a contact for Premium Choice or? I think it's in the bill.
I can find one, yeah, I'm sure we can look through.
You guys can just check, follow up with them and just see what their timeline is. You tell me what you know about Axiom and I'll tell you what I know.
Okay, so he came in a couple of times today and he, he said something to you about the. Okay, so he came in a couple times today and he, he said something to you about the store, but he was in the gym already and he had to come back to do the bandstand, and then he said that he thinks that he found a different location that's going to work better, but he was waiting for some sort of approval or something similar to that, and then what did he say to you about the store?
Um, just that they were kind of waffling now, like that was a thing before and now it might not be, but, um, he's hoping that it still will be, but he was thinking somewhere out here on a pole or something is a, is a really good spot. So he's, they're just, they went into the bandstand, they just went around and they just kind of scow, you know, all out.
Looking at their options, I guess, and he said that the, whatever was installed in the church, he personally would have never installed it knowing that it was gonna work properly and all of this other stuff, so. He thinks that wherever this location out right here is, it's going to be much better.
Yeah, I think they're gonna, I think the store is okay, I think, I have to confirm with everybody, but I, there was an issue this morning and then I think by the afternoon, I think it all got resolved.
Okay.
Uh, but I think here, there, there's a pole right outside the building that I think they're, they're gonna try to connect here, too, so. They're gonna give me, I, I spoke with them at the end of the day and just gonna give you an update.
Okay, yeah, he was, he was here first, first thing this morning, and then he said, I'm gonna run to Waterville real quick, I was like, eh, not really. He's like, I need Greenville, I was like, oh, okay. Who goes, yeah, I get it. They go from water.
Yeah. Alright, and then, uh, last question is, can we clear around the twenty-five mile per hour sign on the Willamette? I'm coming into town on the Willamantic Road, which here looks like it's bamboo and stuff kind of grown, growing around.
What sign is it?
It's the twenty-five mile per hour.
The, the Willamantic Road, is all that bamboo? All those signs are all lost like it was last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All, all of them.
Okay.
Coming this way and going that way?
Yeah, just take, take a drive and put the weed whacker out the window or something.
Okay.
Uh, that's it for me. Town Committee reports, I have a request that we remove the festival committee from the agenda. Moving forward. Anything else for Vice and Daniel?
Uh, other than what we've already talked about, not really, um, nothing new on beautification either.
Sounds beautiful.
Gee, thanks.
Old business, RHR Smith's contract.
Um, okay, so this is the contract between us and the auditors in order for the twenty twenty-one audit to be done. The check rec needs to be brought up today, and I personally don't feel comfortable doing that because where he left off is still not correct. So I don't want to try to like, so they are doing that, and I guess Marty has already talked about that, and now we have a contract that needs to be signed, and then we can schedule. With them, and then.
Is it just bank reconciliation that's not up today?
Yeah. It was, um, it was incorrect going way back, um, and they called me about it, oh, gosh, when was that?
It was a few months ago.
Yeah, and they told me that, um, it, it just, it wasn't right, and they didn't, they couldn't move forward with what they were doing.
And when I first came here, I, I made the attempt to, I feel like, okay, so that the check rec doesn't fall behind, and just looking at it, I'm obviously not like the most well-trained person in that, but I have done it several times, and I was like, I, I don't understand, which he does check rec in Excel, and I've always done check rec through Trio because that's where we write our checks and everything through. So I think it's only because that's how he was trained to do it, and not necessarily saying that it was wrong or whatever, but then.
Lots of people do it that way.
Yeah, lots of people do, do it that way because they don't use Trio, and I guess Trio can be not user-friendly, but.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I've had good results using Trio and, um, the mud uses Trio for their check rec too, so.
So maybe getting it to, to get cleaned up.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what they're doing, because it would be much easier for every, and, and if there are mistakes, having an auditor be like, okay, X, Y, Z versus me, and then, so. But when I first came here, I was like, eh, I don't think that is right, and then like I tried, I broke it all down into how heated things, and I'm like, hmm, that's still, doesn't look right to me, and then, then you're going back a whole nother year, so it's like.
Getting it fixed, we all know what fun numbers can be.
Yeah, especially when they're large. What you or I, or me, we're both. So once the, um, bank rec is caught up to date, we can schedule twenty twenty-one's audit, and then they said usually we are following audit in like November sometimes, so then we'll have posters caught.
Alright, supplemental tax Blanchard.
So the last name's Blanchard, I didn't really think about it when I wrote it, and then Marty's like, Blanchard. I'm like, it's her name, so we actually have a tree growth penalty somewhere in my stack of goodies, and the Blanchard one is actually from March, but March as we all know was kind of crazy, and then this got shuffled aside or whatever, so we, I gave it back to the assessor today, he redid it. It's all ready to be resigned, and then this is the tree growth penalty along with.
Oh, we should have already signed it, we should have signed one?
Yeah. And then the tree growth one is.
Oh, we, the, oh, front page, oh, okay, I got it, okay.
It's just like a current use, we didn't know you had a current use and then you have to.
Um, along the same lines, uh, I'm not real familiar with the current use, I, I don't know what that one, that one there was one that was government-owned property.
Yeah, the, uh, the Blanchard one was government-owned, it go, owned, and so it had a hundred percent, uh, state main exemption on it, and then when it got sold, the exemption never came off, so they weren't paying any taxes at all.
So it is.
So it is now.
If something comes out of current use, you could, yeah, alright, I think I understand what's going on. So we all have to sign this.
Yeah.
How many acres was it?
The, that one, I'm not sure.
The tree growth one?
Or the supplemental one.
Under ten acres, two, or two acres.
Yeah, because, I mean, we were in that situation, if you sell less than a certain number, it needs ten.
Yeah.
We pay the penalty.
Would you just say something?
If your, if your land is in tree growth and you go to sell some of it, if you sell, I believe it's less than ten acres, uh, you have to pay tax, a penalty on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, cemetery sexton?
Okay, so, um, I do believe that this has been brought up at some point, but cemetery sexton, um, Marty has reached out to Chris.
Um, yeah, so there'd been some, some talk about needing a sexton, and, um, you know, Chris has been doing a lot of that type of stuff anyways. And so I did speak to him and just asked him if it might be something that he was interested in, in, in doing. And he said, well, not for nothing, and so I said, well, I think that's pretty much, you know, it always had been a, an unpaid, you know, position, so, um, I said that a lot of people felt that way, that it should be, you know, kind of an annual stipend, I told him, you know, um, it probably would end up being around, po- probably, um, what the code enforcement was, I, I felt like that might be something that everybody might felt, feels reasonable, um, and I just told him it would probably be paid biannually, just like the code enforcement, and, um, he said that he would be willing to consider it, so, you know, if, if that was something that any, everyone was interested in pursuing or maybe starting there and then pursuing it further, if, if Chris was interested, um, I, I would say at this point, he probably knows a lot more than anybody else.
Right.
At this time, so it was presented and, um, he, he's definitely open to discussing it further, if that's something we want to move forward with.
Yeah.
So if, the work he's been doing over, you know, in the, in the past, that's all just part of the regular cemetery maintenance budgets?
Well, actually, so he gets paid right now from the funeral, because he digs the whole construction stuff. So he's basically, aside from the ones that have been burying them themselves, he digs them, um, in the other towns that ever with our cemetery sexton will go and to the funeral or whatever it is, and then kind of hang out in the back until it's over with, and then they'll do the rest of everything, and it has come to my attention that we just let other people bury whoever they, their mother, brother, or whatever, themselves, and we will say, just let us know when you did, and it, they don't. So now we have people in our cemetery that we don't have in our books, and those are kind of permanent fixtures. So I feel like that's kind of a important thing that we maintain well.
Yeah.
And especially now, and I feel like Chris is a good fit because he has been the one placing said people here, so, um, and like if they get cremated, we get the certificate that they were cremated, but then they were released to their family, so when their family buries them, if they don't tell us, we have no idea. Having a sexton, when they call and say, well, what do we do? Our sexton will go and map out exactly what plot it is, that way we don't run into, you know, they buried them that now where it's not technically a slot, or a sunspot, or a walkway, or whatever it may be. So, yeah, it's, it's kind of important, and like, in the other two towns that I report, it was like, like the sexton was also the one that loaded and everything too, you guys have that separated out, so it would be a little bit different, obviously, but.
You want records managed.
Right.
But that's important.
Yeah, and the updating of maps and when any plot is sold, um, the sexton's the one that signs all form of that stuff. I don't really, but we have a huge call for it, but.
They do sell, they, they do sell, I mean, since I've been here, I've probably sold five or six.
Yeah, so I mean, the sexton is usually the one, and then they'll write it down in the book, like the last name of whoever it was, and how many, you know, full burials will fit here, how many cremated, and how many of what, and so I feel like that's definitely been something that's been lacking for quite some time, which cemeteries is a huge thing for every town, just because it's, it's always the last thing they think about, and then when it happens. Yeah, exactly, so it, it kind of just gets pushed, pushed to the side until they no longer can, and I feel like now we're like, oh.
Well, we've been talking about, you know, maintenance of cemeteries, the roads, um, and, um, so a sexton would, would, in terms of also like the headstones, if there are any that were damaged?
Um, so, in the past, the sledboard in both towns are the ones that kind of like arranged for people to come in and have them fixed or clean them or whatever, the sexton can always kind of be, is involved in the process, but the sledboard is usually the one that has done it. I know that Garland had a company come in and, um, restore almost two full cemeteries, um, over the course of forty years, and they look amazing, um, and then, but their sexton was, they're the ones with all the knowledge, they're the ones with all the information, so they can kind of, you know, do the footwork for the sledboard.
We've got one I'll pick up.
And I think if we put together exactly what the expectations were, we got together with them and really laid it out, then he could say, I couldn't take on something of that magnitude, or I can, or this is what I can do, this is, I can, this is not this.
The, the money budgeted in the cemetery line item is that, um, we haven't really used it, I mean, is that can we go towards a sexton maintenance?
Right, and, yeah, and I don't know what the rules are for like the cemetery, there's different perpetual care funds that we have, like several money, and, and then we have a cemetery, that's also a reserve too, so like, what is the difference between like the perpetual care, obviously, and then the cemetery reserve, what exactly was that designed for, and then? So, it's a good question.
And, and as far, and then as far as the prompt here at the beginning, I mean, it sounds like we're, the answer is yes, look.
Pursue that.
Pursue it and come up with a plan.
Okay. Perfect.
Time manager women and oath.
Okay, so I have two appointments and those.
You just give the, you voted on the appointment, but, um, I failed to bring it to the meeting to be signed, so.
So we're just gonna sign it, and then I did one for the GA, GA administrator, we never really talked about that, but, um, I got the man in review for the GA today, and I just wanted to do it and get it done with so that we're not in non-compliance. Um, so if you sign that, so then I can send that away, those two.
Alright, new business, time manager updates.
So, um, that was before, before I talked about that. Um, you sent me an email earlier in the week, asked me about the PFA that mud has been tested for that, I talked to Brian, he says not yet, but he's working with Maine Royal Water, so they're gonna try to assist us in that, because in order to do the testing, you have to like completely sterilize yourself, you're quoting absolutely everything in order to get an accurate reading, and then the testing was actually outside of the stadium, so it, there's kind of a trial to do this, so he asked for systems to make sure that we do it correctly, and he said that we have until the end of the year to do it, so.
This is PCA, so.
Yes, yeah, so I did check with that, and that's the updated minute, and then the water street building update, she did. Um, roadside filling is down below. Um, okay, so the only thing I have left is, um, through our MMA workers comp, there is a grant, uh, safety grant that, um, I was thinking would be good for the fire department, they do things like, um, safety cones that we budgeted for this year, have vis jackets, ladders, things like that, I spoke with the fire department this week and I asked him if they could get any pictures of like the cones that they have are using that are not good, ladder rounds, whatever, so I think that that would be a good, because that would be, it's up to three thousand dollars, so it might not cover everything that we need, but it's three thousand dollars out of our budget that we would need to use or use it for something else, so.
Well, and they could get more of the equipment that they need.
Exactly, exactly, so, and, oh, the stop slow signs, that's included in that too, um, so, and it's through the workers comp that we've used, so I feel like that's, yeah, so it's through MMA.
Elena, I know this is just like another thing on, on your radar, but, um, so we put in the budget for like a grant right here for, um, the fire department.
Yes, so, um, what we were originally waiting for was a letter for them, their nonprofit letter, and then I thi- we finally got it, I do believe?
I haven't heard them.
You haven't heard it, okay, so that's what we were waiting on, I guess they have mailed it several times and we are not getting it, I guess they sent it to maybe Julie Anderson's personal mailbox at some point, and I'm like, is there a way that they can FedEx it so we can track it or something? Because the fire department's like, they said that they sent it like three times, so that's another aspect of things, but, um, the, the truck is like the main, I, I mean, they have a lot of problems, obviously, over there, but the truck, I mean, two years and not being able to use your main fire truck and not having a backup is, is an issue, and then I guess there's a few other issues on that line, like where are we going to park said fire truck? Because new fire trucks are bigger and they will not fit in our department. So that's something that we kind of need to think about, and the fact that we now have a fire truck in the public works building. Computer and the fact that we now have fire truck in the public works building and no place for public works. Um, a solution that we actually kind of were throwing around earlier was maybe like a portable garage for a short-term. Thing because they also have a boat sitting outside now that is now getting, you know, sun.
Portable garage for fire equipment or?
Well, maybe even thinking of one for the truck and one for the boat for short-term and then.
The public works truck. Problem with fire truck is it's gonna be full of water and it would freeze if it was outside and I believe the lower would. So as long as, um. You know, I I don't know how much trouble that truck has starting in the winter when it's really cold. I mean, we talked to Steve about it, obviously.
We were just bouncing ideas around because I mean, it it is a huge problem and obviously we don't have money to just build a new building.
Dump of a big building in the dump. What is that useful?
This this sand chip?
Is that what it is?
What, right as you're pulling in?
Is there room in that?
No, and so the idea from the fire department in in this is just an idea is to build something for the public works down there. Since their stuff is down there and then they would have the basement they need.
They really want the basement of this building.
Well, the recent, we changed the locks downstairs on the office building and he brought me a vehicle and I was like, so where's my key? Cause I get to be apart too. And he's like, oh, I'll have you key. And he did, we have you key that day. So I was like, okay, cool. And so, um. They were looking for a fire department email and I said, as long as, you know. I'm not getting kept out of the loop now that you have your own email because it's and he said, no, it's not. So. I'm hoping that communication stays open there. Sometimes it's. Working hard.
Sometimes emotions run high.
Sure do.
And I'm one of the periphery, so.
Yeah. So, um, I'll include this in your set knowing. So that's the last thing I have that's not covered by anything going down.
Alright, dangerous building, Moosehead Manufacturing Plan.
Um, that was something that Brian.
Brian just kind of put it as a, um, keep it on the radar and at that time. He had said one of the outbuildings had collapsed and I haven't been down myself from what I understand now, pretty much the whole place has collapsed.
Building's collapsed all over the place, yeah.
So normally that would be considered a dangerous building situation and, you know, per the ordinance, you have.
Six months.
Okay, to clean something up when it falls down.
If you ever spill or break your building down, you've got six months to get rid of it.
So, um, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind down there, so I think that's why it probably hasn't been brought up before. But yeah, so the big question is, is this something that we want to pursue?
Yeah, so let's take Moosehead Manufacturing out of this for a second and just. Talk about dangerous buildings more generally, right? So that's one, that's one site. I would say yes, let's proceed. There's the building on Center Street. You know what I'm talking about. It's been it's been under renovation for thirty or forty years. I remember at one point I I drove by probably like a year or two ago and I was like, oh, this house, I forgot about this house. Looks like it's under renovation. And then a couple of months later, I was looking at stuff on Google Street View. And it looked exactly the same and I looked at the date on the picture and it was twenty eleven. So that's one. Um, and then there are the two on Tenny Hill. So there's the, I forget the names, the one with the blue tarp on it.
Yeah, they're cleaned up some. I need to call them back and see when are you gonna finish it because we can't have blue tarps like that.
Yeah, and then there was one other I forget.
I mean, there's another one right in that vicinity.
That looks like it's been cleaned up a lot.
Okay, okay, yeah, I I'm not familiar with the, the only one I'm aware of on Tenny Hill is the one with the tart.
Yeah, okay, so, um. I don't know to what extent we need to incorporate this in. Uh, in our agendas, like on a consistent basis, but but just to have updates on these open items and we tracking them accordingly.
Well, and like going forward, now that, you know, like I know kind of what's going on a little bit, um, I can include it in what I have to update to instead of just.
But yeah, yeah, for for example, if you say, hey, we wanna, we wanna, uh, move forward with whatever the next step is for Moosehead Manufacturing. And they have six months or whatever that timeline is, we don't need to talk about it every two weeks.
Do you know when, do we know when it fell down?
It's been a long time. It's been more than a year.
So do we have to start the six months clock ticking when somebody notifies them or is it, are they six months past due at this point?
Or maybe send them a letter saying it's been more than a year. Falling down?
I'm sure there's rules about this, so.
Oh, these buildings at Moosehead have asbestos. I understand. So that mitigation's going to be far more expensive than it would be to tear down a house on Water Street.
Hopefully they'll deal with it themselves, though. That'd be nice.
As part of that. If they want to sell the property, they have to turn it out.
And if they don't sell the property, we end up owning it by tax sale. And then it's our problem.
Well, we'll figure it out. Alright, roadside milling update.
Okay, so, um. I and I spoke to Tyler about this earlier, but we put the roadside milling up to bid. In in the paper for this week. Um, and I said to open bids at the next meeting, which were also opening. Contracts as well that meeting. Um, and. Because of that, I guess there was conversation about renting a mower and having Steve just do it as an employee. And that's also an option. I reached out to H P Fairfields or something similar to that event today for a quote on what the mower would be. Because Brian has said in the past, um, we have rented them for the leach fields through this company. In, it also says that you guys can reject or whatever, any bids that we do get, so we can go the other route if we choose to do that. That way we can. What is cost-effective. Um, plus, we haven't had any mowers at all this. This year and now it's almost the end of July, so I think. Alright, so I figured just to get the ball rolling ahead of time, that way we can. Get some, get some quotes and if it is better off to just have Steve do it, then we can go that route too. I hope, um. On their website, it says that they'll get back to you within seventy-two hours or whatever, so I'm hoping by maybe tomorrow. If not, I'll call them again and see if they can give me a quote and then I can forward that along.
Certainly by the next meeting.
Any snowplow bits coming in?
Now people came and picked up packages.
I saw the app. Well, if he's got insured registered equipment, that could work.
He picked up two copies. Oh, and I forgot one thing in the time manager's update, but super quick, um. There's something that the the state offers. It's called special fuel and gasoline tax refund and. This is the only town I've ever reported that has melatonin. Um, you can submit all fuel that has been purchased not for heating purposes. So all diesel for the loader, the fire truck, all that stuff. Um, you can submit to within eighteen months of purchase. So we can only go back eighteen months, but I am working on this. Um, I'm. I'll have to actually call Robinsons for the breakdown for the public works because the, up until last week. Just the public works had a account opened with Robinsons that breaks it down per gallon wise. Um, but for diesel, I think it's thirty-one cents. So for eighteen months worth of fuel, hopefully that will be a nice revenue for us.
Seven oh seven on the dot, one hour. Next up, we'll move into executive session for one M R S four zero five one E legal matters.